Buenos Aires and Hafa Day, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Research, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this public hearing to order. The time is now nine eleven a.m. Friday, May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. In compliance with the open government law, notices of today's hearing were published on the Guam Daily Post and provided via email to senators, stakeholders, and the local media and posted on the government of Guam Public Notices website on Friday, April twenty-eighth for the five-day notice and May third, Wednesday, for the forty-eight-hour notice. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me here today, Senator Tom Fisher, thank you, and Senator Chris Duennius. So the purpose of today's public hearing is to receive testimony on three items. Bill number one oh one dash thirty-seven C O R, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, is enacted to repeal and reenact Section one three one zero of Article One, Chapter One, Title Twenty-two Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations relative to adopting updated emission standards for sulfur oxides from fuel combustion to ensure the island of Guam meets the national ambient air quality standards for sulfur dioxide transmitted by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. The second item is Bill number one oh four dash thirty-seven L S, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, co-sponsored by Senator Christopher M. Duennius and Senator Chris Barnett. It's enacted to amend Section three six oh six D four of Article Six, Chapter Three, Title sixteen Guam Code annotated, and to amend Section five one two oh two C, five one two oh five B, five one two oh seven B of Article Two, Chapter fifty-one, and to amend Section five one three oh one P of Article Three, Chapter fifty-one, and to add a new Article Six to Chapter fifty-one, all of Title ten Guam Code annotated, and to add a new Section forty-six point eight five to Chapter forty-six of Title nine Guam Code annotated relative to the disposal of junk vehicles. The final item on the agenda is Bill number seven six dash thirty-seven L S, sponsored by Senator William A. Parkinson, to amend subsection K of Section five oh one oh two of Chapter fifty, Title ten Guam Code annotated, and to repeal subsection D of Section five oh one oh seven, Chapter fifty, Title ten Guam Code annotated relative to removing prerequisite training in order to attain a certified pesticide license for applying general use pesticides. So today's rules of conduct include individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and by stating their name, organization, position of relevance for record-keeping purposes. Senators will be given opportunity at the end of each panel to ask questions. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and nature of the agenda. So I would like to now acknowledge Senator Joanne Brown. So to begin our agenda, Bill one oh one dash thirty-seven C O R, sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, is enacted to repeal and reenact Section one three one zero of Article One, Chapter One, Title Twenty-two of Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations relative to the updated emission standards for sulfur oxides from fuel combustion to ensure the island of Guam meets the national ambient air quality standards for sulfur dioxide transmitted by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. Okay, so I'd like to provide some opening remarks. Bill one oh one dash thirty-seven proposes to codify regulations, some of which was promulgated by Guam E.P.A. in collaboration with U.S. EPA, to bring Guam within compliance of the Clean Air Act by limiting the sulfur content of fuel to fifteen parts per million by June first, two thousand and twenty-three, with the exception of up to two thousand parts per million for Cabris one and two prior to their closure and decommissioning. GPA under the consent decree with U.S. EPA is permitted to continue the use of bunker fuel, which is until the Dedido or Harmon Power Plant starts producing power. By limiting sulfur content in fuel in combination with other emission control measures, Guam is on track of reducing emissions of the primary pollutant of sulfur dioxide from its two thousand and twenty levels of nine thousand one hundred and ninety-seven tons down to three tons. Sulfur dioxide can cause asthma, bronchitis, is a major cause of acid rain, and harms aquatic and other forms of life. Bill one oh one dash thirty-seven would require Cabris one and two to record daily the types and amounts of fuel used and that those records be maintained for five years. It would also mandate Cabris one and two be permanently retired by October first, two thousand and twenty-four. Okay, notices of today's confirmation hearing were sent to Guam E.P.A., GPA. The committee has received written testimony by Mr. Byron Ugin in support of the bill. So now I'd like to call upon all those if they can come to the front desk if you would like to testify or support testimony on behalf of your agency. So Administrator Walter Leon Guero, Roland Gutierrez, and if GPA, if you would like to take a seat at the table, that'd be great, and anybody else who would like to. Okay, so I'd like to recognize Administrator Leon Guero for your testimony.
Thank you, Chairman, Chairman, and Senators. Roland will be reading the written testimony, but I just want to put out before he starts that working with GPA, this is where we've come and got the numbers and the levels of sulfur in fuel that they can obtain. But without this law, this is where the federal highway funds can be withheld. And so I just want to make sure that that's understood by product. If this is not done, then there may be some federal highway monies prohibited from DPW being used. And they're not a lot of big projects because it's only affecting the federal highways funding that's around the attainment area, which is around Cabris. But still, I know that there's projects in place for that to be done. Thank you.
This is Massey Administrator Leon Guero. Mr. Gutierrez, you're recognized.
Good morning, Chairman Perez and Honorable Senators of the Thirty-seventh Guam Legislature. My name is Roland Gutierrez. I'm the Acting Air and Land Programs Administrator for the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, and I'll be reading the testimony of our Administrator, Mr. Walter Long Guero. The Guam Environmental Protection Agency, Guam E.P.A., supports Bill one oh one dash thirty-seven in its current form. Guam E.P.A.'s air pollution control program is responsible for enforcing the air pollution control standards and regulations of the island of Guam. These regulations were authored under the authority given by Guam's Air Pollution Control Act. This program is also responsible for helping implement actions required of Guam by the Federal Clean Air Act. Federal law requires that the Guam State Implementation Plan be updated. The passage of this bill supports the approval of the SIP. Without it, Guam is in jeopardy of losing its primacy over the Title V program. Don't Luna Sidus Massey for allowing me to provide this testimony very respectfully, Walter S. Leon Guero.
That's the Massey. Mr. Gutierrez, so I'd like to recognize GPA. We have on our list is Roger. Trying to read this. Pabulan? Did I say that correctly? So you're recognized if you would like to provide testimony.
Good morning, everyone, and good morning, Senators, and thank you for the opportunity.
Is so you're are you providing testimony on behalf of GPA or just here for support?
I'm just here for support.
Oh, support, okay. So my apologies. So who's presenting testimony? Is it Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, so you're recognized, Mr. Cruz, for your testimony.
Good morning. Once again, I'm Mr. Noel Cruz from the Guam Power Authority. I'm here in behalf of our General Manager, Mr. John Benevanti, and to read his testimony in support of the proposed legislation. If I may, good morning, Senators. I will start reading his testimony. Hafa Day, Senator Perez, thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in favor of Bill number one oh one three seven C O R. Bill number one oh one three seven seeks to adopt sulfur fuel content, which will be included in the updated state implementation plan, or the S I P, in order to administratively satisfy compliance with the United States Environmental Protection Agency Clean Air Act Part D requirements for the non-attainment areas for the two thousand and ten S O two National Ambient Air Quality Standards, better known as NACs, and to avoid sanctions to failing to submit an attainment plan for the two thousand and ten S O two N A Q S. The Guam Power Authority is deeply committed, doing its part to improve the air quality for the residents of the island of Guam, and is in full support of this bill. GPA, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and the Department of Justice entered into a consent decree filed at the District Court of Guam in February two thousand and twenty. That required GPA to comply with the U.S. EPA's N A A Q S by two thousand and twenty-three. GPA recently completed several projects, including the conversion of all four of our base load generators, from burning residual fuel oil at one point nineteen percent sulfur content to two point zero percent sulfur content, and to ultra-low sulfur residual fuel oil at zero point two percent sulfur, and low sulfur diesel at point zero zero one five percent sulfur content. Since the completion of these projects, GPA air emission are now within the attainment and have resulted in a substantial improvement in air quality in the Cabras area. Cabras one and two base load generators received its final delivery of high sulfur residual fuel oil in April two thousand and twenty-two and the low sulfur residual fuel oil in June two thousand and twenty-two. By November two thousand and twenty-two, that was last year, Cabras one and two began using ultra-low sulfur residual fuel oil at zero point two percent sulfur content. As for the base load generators, PT eight and nine, GPA completed their conversion to burn ultra-low sulfur diesel at zero zero fifteen percent fuel in September of two thousand and twenty-two. This conversion is part of GPA's clean energy master plan and satisfies a federal consent decree that requires all of Guam's generators to switch to cleaner burning fuel, a move that aligns with the U.S. EPA national emission standards of hazardous air pollutants for stationary reciprocating internal combustion engine. GPA notes that following concern, Section two, Part C of the proposed bill, A S T M D two eight eight zero is the standard specification for gas turbine fuel consisting of the different properties of the fuel with the test method. However, the specific test method for determining the sulfur content was not identified in the bill. Also, such test method may not be available at the petroleum testing laboratories facilities in Guam. GPA's fuel supply contracts for diesel fuel oil number two refer to the A S T M D nine seven five is a standard for diesel fuel oil number two, which identifies either A S T M D five four five three or the A S T M D seven oh three nine as the standard method for the determination of the sulfur content. GPA's fuel supply contracts for residual fuel oil number six reference the A S T M D three nine six, standard for residual fuel oil number six, which identifies either A S T M D four two nine four or A S T M D two six two two as the standard test method for the determination of the sulfur content. We have with you in front of you now is a table that summarizes the GPA generating units and the recommended test methods for determining the sulfur content of the fuel. In addition, such test methods are readily available on the island, and testing may be performed and certified by an independent third-party petroleum laboratory testing facility in Guam. Such test methods are currently being utilized for fuel shipments to GPA. The fuel is being tested as it leaves the point of origin, which is the road of port, and the fuel shipment is tested again upon arrival at the Apra Harbor Unloading Dock in Guam, which is the discharge port, and is being performed and certified by an independent third-party petroleum laboratory testing facility in Guam. The sulfur content of the fuel must not exceed the regulatory limit as a condition for the acceptance of the project or the product. Certified copies of the fuel quality reports that includes the sulfur content of the fuel shipment to GPA are compiled, and the test results are regularly reported to the EPA. GPA respectfully requests for the changes to Section two, subsection one three one zero, Part C, under line fifteen and sixteen, that reads, and I quote, "The test methods contained in A S T M D two eight eight zero shall be used in asserting the sulfur content of the fuels," I close quote, "shall be replaced with the test methods contained in A S T M D five four five three or A S T M D seven zero three nine, which shall be used in asserting the sulfur content of diesel fuel oil number two, or U L S D, and then A S T M D four two nine four or A S T M D two six two two shall be used in asserting the sulfur content of the residual fuel oil number six, which is now U L S R F O." Thank you again for the opportunity to provide this testimony. Sincerely, John M. Benevanti.
This is Massey. Mr. Cruz, providing that testimony on behalf of GPA. So I'd like to recognize Monaca Flores for her testimony. Good morning.
Good morning, Senator, and good morning, all senators present for this hearing today. My name is Monaca Flores, and I'm here as a private citizen. I'm a member of several community groups. I know some of you have seen me here before to testify on issues of, you know, concern for our environment. And I'm here in support of Bill one oh one dash thirty-seven. I'm quite relieved to hear the support of our government agencies. And I just want to thank Senator Perez for recognizing this void in our local law that will help to carry out these important standards that keep our community and our environment safe. There are many risks associated with exposure to sulfur dioxide. These include health risks that impact our most vulnerable, our community members with lung disease, children, elderly, and active folks who spend a lot of time outside. Sulfur dioxide can impact our respiratory system and our skin. But moreover, you know, sulfur dioxide already occurs in the natural environment. And so this measure is so critical in, you know, affecting the ways in which human activity very directly releases sulfur dioxide into the environment. And sulfur dioxide impacts plants and animals as well. When combined with water, it creates acid rain. This impacts deforestation and the way our forests and plants regenerate themselves. This impacts everything. It impacts the way our aquifer recharges and protects itself, the way plants, sorry, the way animals find food, the way we use traditional medicines. All of this is impacted by air pollution and how we control toxic and hazardous air emissions. And so I'm here to support this legislation as it's an important step to protect us from hazardous air emissions. It's a concern that we continue to bring to the legislature time and time again, that we need more protection of our air and our natural resources. This is Massey.
Thank you so much, Monaca, for being here and for your testimony. Okay, so are there anyone else who would like to provide testimony for Bill one oh one? Okay, so then we'll proceed to the next part of this hearing is the question. So maybe going to you, Administrator. So you mentioned that there could be a loss of federal highway funds. I know that this was brought up last term regarding the sulfur dioxide non-attainment rules and regs. So what is the timeline for this as far as loss of federal funds?
So U.S. EPA and the federal highways have already, federal highways have already contacted DPW and just stated in my meetings with the regional air program in March, they are understanding that this bill would be put on the floor for this month, and they're actually waiting to see if we fall into compliance as Guam. So it's past due, but they are waiting, and they're hoping that in our general discussions, as long as it doesn't exceed, you know, like a six-month time period, that they are happy to, again, tell the federal highway to go ahead and provide funds. But right now, it's in question. Thank you.
So at this time, there's no funds being withheld. Is that correct?
At this point, I know that they can be. I would have to check with DPW if they've actually withheld funds. I know that that is a possibility. I don't know that for sure. Thank you.
Okay, and as far as this portion of the regulations, this is the part that needs to be included in the state implementation plan? Is this the last component that's needed?
That's correct.
And how long will it take for the SIP or the state implementation plan to be finalized?
I'll pass that to Mr. Gutierrez here. Thank you.
So at this point in time, what we need to do is pass a law. We just received the final modeling report from modeling protocol from GPA, sending that to U.S. EPA. Once that's approved, and once the amendment is approved, I guess with some change that I, something new I've heard today about their wanting to change the test method. The test method that was put in the plan was directly from U.S. EPA. So I don't know if they changed their consent decree. Was that a change?
Yeah, I'll go and ask them.
Yeah, you asked him that. And so once that is done, and once we figure out this issue, because this is the first I've heard of it today, then it'll be thirty days in public notice. And once a thirty-day public notice is done, it'll be submitted to U.S. EPA for approval. Once it's approved, then it'll be put in the federal register as notice, and they'll give another thirty-day notice in the federal register. And after the thirty-day notice, if there's no significant comments to U.S. EPA's federal notice, then it'll be published as finalized, updated Guam SIP, state implementation plan.
Okay. And in the bill, it states effective June first. Is this a good date, or does it need to be changed?
No, the date is fine.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, I was going to ask the question about the testing. So I'll go and ask GPA. So yes, Mr. Gutierrez mentioned that GPA has a consent decree. So is U.S. EPA aware of the testing methods that you're suggesting? Is that part of the consent decree?
The testing method actually is very general at the consent decree. So the numbers that we saw here is changed based on what we have here in Guam, available testing laboratories. As far as the testing for the sulfur content, this is the same one that the U.S. EPA would require, because this is an A S T M, American Society for Testing and Materials.
Okay, so we'll probably follow up with U.S. EPA on this one.
We'll verify.
Yeah, the other question I have, so currently Guam has banned any kind of importation of anything but ultra-low sulfur diesel. So what is a testing method used for that? Are you aware? And so under Subpart C of this bill, is this consistent with what's being used when we ensure that ultra-low sulfur diesel is what's being brought in? And how closely does EPA follow this?
Yes, so by law, it's required of them. And so all of the records that are kept by the importation of ultra-low sulfur diesel, we do review the records for the companies. And as I said, there's various methods to test it. As long as it's an accepted A S T M method for the testing of the sulfur in diesel, then it can be approved. It has to be a known method. It has to be a published method that's been approved by basically the Association of Standard Testing Methods.
Okay.
American standard testing.
So do we require, upon importation of diesel, do we require the testing from the source?
Any diesel that's imported to Guam must have a record of the testing. So we can go there at any time and verify whether it's Shell, Mobil, or South Pacific Petroleum for that lot or batch of diesel that was brought into the island.
Okay, and do we require them to also test upon arrival?
No, it's a test before they bring it. They can't import it into Guam if they don't have the proper records.
Yeah, because this bill requires before and after. So is that...
Well, usually, the before method would be when it comes in, and generally, when the people use the thing like GPA, and GPA tests all of the, what do you call that, on a periodic basis to make sure that the sulfur content is what it is.
Okay. Okay, great. Thanks. And so I'm going to turn to GPA. So it's good that you're ready. So you're in compliance already. So you're not using anything but ultra-low sulfur diesel in the power plants. Is that correct?
For U L S D, ultra-low sulfur diesel, we're using that for our other generators. But for the Cabras one and two right now, we're using an ultra-low sulfur R F O, which is a point two percent sulfur content.
Okay. All right. So you have no issues with complying with this? And as far as item E, so you're on track of retiring Cabras one and two?
That's correct.
By October thirty-first?
That's correct.
Two thousand and twenty-four, I guess. Is that part of the consent decree?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple more questions before I turn it over to my colleagues. So you're, just to reiterate, the sulfur, are you currently burning bunker fuel?
Yes, ma'am, yes, Senator. That's the R F O, the bunker fuel. We're burning at Cabras one and two right now.
And that one has a two percent?
It's zero point two percent.
Zero point two percent, okay.
Since November two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. And how far in the future do GPA bunker fuels purchases extend? So have you stopped purchasing the bunker fuel, or is there continual purchases?
I have to get back on you on that one, ma'am.
So if you can reiterate, the sulfur content limits in the consent decree by U.S. EPA, were there any sulfur content limits at this current time?
Yes.
So, yeah, are there any sulfur content limits in the fuel that GPA is authorized to use in its consent decree agreement with U.S. EPA?
That's the only one, ma'am, for the U L S D and for the R F.
Point two percent? Okay. Does GPA have markets to purchase bunker fuel with sulfur content of two thousand parts per million?
We've already ceased in purchasing any other type of R F O besides the zero point two percent. So we no longer have...
That's the same thing.
That's point two. Yeah, so only that grade of sulfur content.
Yeah, so are you, do you have, are there markets out there that sell that? Are you continually purchasing it, or do you have already a contract in place?
Yeah, we have a contract in place.
Okay. So at this point, will LEAC be affected? Is LEAC being affected by this?
Again, ma'am?
So I guess if the legislature were to grant an exception to fifteen parts per million and allow GPA to import two thousand parts per million diesel, what would be the anticipated LEAC?
Also, for the two thousand parts per million, that is for the bunker fuel or the R F O six, and then for the U L S D or diesel fuel, that would be the fifteen ppm or point zero zero one five percent.
Okay, so is there any effect to LEAC?
Oh, the LEAC. I cannot answer for that. We'll have to check if it'll affect the LEAC.
Okay, so currently, U.S. EPA allows the use of five hundred parts per million of low sulfur diesel in large equipment. Is there any practical use for low sulfur diesel in Guam for GPA or any industry?
Yeah, we'll have to get back to you on that, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and forward these questions, and we'll seek the responses in the meantime. So, yeah, thank you so much for your response, but I would like to open up to my colleagues for questions. First of all, I want to recognize Senator Titicui, who is the sponsor of the bill that banned importation of, or only, yeah, which only allowed for the purchase of low sulfur diesel, ultra-low sulfur diesel, excuse me. Okay, so Senator Fisher, you're recognized for any questions to the panel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask a question of GPA, I'm looking at page two of three of the letter dated May fifth, in which you have a table. Could you teach me how to read the table?
Yes. Okay, from the table that you have in front of you right From the table that you have in front of you right now, for generating units, it was separated to two, to the four generating units that we have. We have PT unit 8 and PT unit 9. And with the technologies, a slow-speed diesel engine, both of them. And the fuel type that they use is a diesel fuel oil number 2, which we call ultra-low sulfur diesel. And the sulfur limit on that is a 15 ppm or in percentage is 0.0015% sulfur content. And the test method, which is now being used, is ASTM or American Society of Testing and Materials, D5453 or ASTM D7039. Jumping on Cabras unit number 1 and Cabras unit number 2, which is the steam turbine generator, they are burning right now a residual fuel oil number 6. But this has been changed to an ultra-low sulfur RFO since November, November 2022, which is 2,000 ppm or 0.2% sulfur content. And this is being tested through the test method ASTM D4294 or ASTM D2622.
And pursuant to the tests, you were able to determine the sulfur content of the funeral, of the fuel, correct? And what we learned from the sulfur limits in this table, are they consistent with federal law?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the thrust of the bill is to bring down the content, correct? Okay. So to improve upon federal law. Okay. It seems like a terrific idea. Could I ask, thank you very much, sir. Ms. Flores, could I ask you a question? It's really simply this. Does this ambient sulfur dioxide, does it have any effect on our oceans or sea life?
Absolutely. So, you know, sulfur dioxide also occurs in volcanic eruptions. So it occurs naturally. But when combined with water, it creates acid rain. And that does impact coastal resources, freshwater resources, the forest. So that's a great question. So, yes, it absolutely does.
Is it, is it dangerous to sea life?
It's dangerous to all plants and animals and humans. Acid rain impacts any organism's ability to stay healthy. It, it impacts, you know, certain plants and algae's ability to regenerate and continue to grow. It, it impacts the way our forests continue to generate growth. So that impacts our aquifer. The health of our aquifer impacts our coastal resources. It's all connected. And we can't look at these things as separate any longer. And we can't also look at ourselves as separate from the natural environment any longer. So it, there are many, there are many impacts with the acid rain. That, that, yeah. Acid rain impacts even non-living things. It impacts property. It impacts vehicles, buildings, you name it, historic sites. And so, it's a serious concern. And as I mentioned, you know, it already occurs in nature. So we do live in a volcanic island chain. We are in the Pacific with, where many islands have active volcanic activity in them. And so, to reduce the emission of this gas that's created by human activities, specifically by burning fossil fuel, is, is very important. And so, we're, you know, I'm very grateful that this legislation has been introduced.
Thank you for your answer. I, I support the legislation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Duennias, you're recognized.
Situs Massey, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to say thank you to GPA for being on this schedule and on the timeline. It looks as though the bill will support and, of course, then translate into the, you know, the requirements for EPA and what they require. Walter, I, I'm taking from your testimony that, and we see very little opposition, in fact, no opposition, but maybe a clarification on a test method. If we are able to get this committee report put together rather quickly and have it on the May session, the second May session, which is going to be coming up at the end of the month, does that, does that meet your timelines?
It will. It will, Senator. Again, we just need to convey the timeline that this bill and the passing and the region is, is working with us hand in hand to make sure that even though it's already passed due, they understand and they appreciate the efforts that are being put forth by GPA ourselves and this legislative body. And so, they are putting it on hold to not just, again, my understanding, not to withhold anything, but their, this statement is there that if we don't move forward, then they may withhold some federal highway funds.
Yeah. Just going to make a recommendation for maybe yourself and Mr. Gutierrez or the team to sign off and send them an email updating them that this bill has been heard and that there was no opposition and that, you know, we're just going to clarify. I think Mr. Gutierrez already said he's going to clarify on this test method that's available on Guam to ensure that it meets. But it looks like a pretty simple procedure here and I just, I think that would be one move that, you know, just keeping them up to date, I think they'll appreciate that. Just wanted to put that on the record.
Yes, Senator. So we even provided the draft bill to make sure that they said, okay, yeah, this is what is needed by Guam to meet the requirements. So we are in constant contact. Thank you, Senator.
Great. Thank you to the entire team for your efforts and once again, being on the timeline or maybe even ahead of the timeline. And the bill will be the codification to make sure that we're doing what we need to do. Good job, folks. And thank you, Madam Chair. Situs Massey.
Thank you, Senator Duennias. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And certainly, good morning to all our panel members that are here. I do appreciate the, and certainly, it's a car, you know, with regards to air emissions, that this use of this lower sulfur diesel fuel is being put in place. And I think that's a very good thing. And certainly, because we have in the past experienced more direct adverse impact from the air emissions from Cabras. And certainly, my time at the port, on several occasions, we had our employees and our crane operators, while they were unloading a vessel that, you know, were impacted by inhaling this. We had six of them that had to be taken up to the hospital because of it. So I think anything we can do to clean and address the air quality so that it actually is something that's breathable for us and improves and enhances our environment is a good thing. I did want clarification from Guam Power Authority because I recently heard, and when we were having the briefing with regards to construction of a new power plant, we were told that there was going to be an additional facility built at Cabras. Originally, we were under the impression that all the Cabras units were going to be shut down. But we were told that this was going to be a backup facility in the event that it was needed for the Northern Power Plant. And then we heard in the news that for whatever reason, that particular unit is not going to be built. So what does that mean with regards to your existing units down there? Because we were told that several of them, if not more, were going to be shut down. So what is the status? Because I had ultimately hoped that all the units at Cabras would be shut down. So where are we with regards to that?
Ma'am, Senator, regarding the 14 megawatt that was proposed for a new power plant, that has been canned, it will not push through. For the plans as regarding the shutting down of the existing units, Cabras 3 and 4, we know are down already since 2015. Cabras 1 and 2 will follow suit maybe six months or a year after the new power.
So, just to clarify, I'm sorry, appreciate it. 3 and 4 have already been shut down as of 2015?
Yes, ma'am.
1 and 2 will be shut down when, you said? Within the next six months or so?
No. That, that will, six months to a year probably, as soon as the new power plant is up. It has to be there for a while.
Okay. So once that, once the dead-end of plant's completed, then 1 and 2 will be?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Retired? Maybe that's a nice word. Retired in a nice way?
The commission.
Okay. And what does that leave? Is there anything else that's going to be operational after that or will Cabras as a facility be fully shut down?
That I have to defer the answer because I know this Cabras or PT 8 and 9 would still be there as a backup.
Okay. So you're still looking at 8 and 9 being kept as a backup for indefinite period of time or do we know?
No, we don't have exactly.
Okay. Well, it'd be good. I mean, I hope that once we, next time we have a briefing with GPA, it'd be good to get an update because those changes have since occurred. And again, we've just heard it, you know, announced and, you know, like I said, ultimately, the desire to see all the, all the units that Cabras shut down and have it, you know, have it concluded. You know, it's in our interest for those that are operating in that area, you know, wanting very much to see that. But certainly appreciate all the efforts being put in place to reduce the sulfur content with the emissions down at Cabras. With that, I have no further questions. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you, GPA, for responding to my questions. Thank you.
Situs Massey. Senator Brown. Senator Taidikwe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good morning to my colleagues, but most especially, good morning to everyone here at the public hearing room. Appreciate your time. Very much appreciate your time. We rely on the public and those with the expertise to come forward to help guide us on good legislation. So it is important for you to be here. And, and I thank the good author of this legislation for recognizing that in the 30th Guam Legislature, 2009, I believe, or 2008, I introduced a legislation for the ultra-low sulfur diesel that no old, that no diesel can come onto Guam unless it meets the ultra-low sulfur diesel standards. And we're here how many years later and, and still addressing this. But, you know, I think we're a bit of ahead of the game when it comes to ultra-low sulfur diesel because of the law that was implemented over 10 years ago to ensure that we try and meet US EPA standards when it comes to air quality. But most especially, it's not just for, you know, the power plant, but we look at vehicles like these tour buses that go down the street. We look at the ambulances that all require ultra-low sulfur diesel and providing more the options to bring it into Guam and sell it at a lower price. That's what we're doing. My biggest concern now is, you know, I mean, the, the bill, I definitely support the bill, anything to strengthen the air quality on our island and especially to stay within the guidelines of US EPA so that we're not penalized with humongous fees that we have been done or threatened in the past to do so. But my concern is the, the used oil that is coming from these power plants and generators. We know that you can't sell ultra-low sulfur diesel on Guam, can't be brought in. But GPA, are you still using and treating used oil and burning it to this day?
Ma'am, I'm glad to say that we're no longer burning used oil or waste oil in our power plant.
So what are you doing? Because GPA is one of the biggest contributors to used oil, which needs to be discharged or, or, you know, we used to ship it off island to get rid of it or somewhere to, to, to be disposed of. Yeah, thank you. Disposed of. So what are you doing to dispose the used oil now?
Yes, Senator, I'm also glad to say that most of our used oil are being shipped out actually to Korea.
To Korea?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, what about, yeah, everybody else's used oil? Because it's not just GPA, but we have car dealers or workshops and, and maybe you, EPA, Guam EPA can let us know, are you doing your inspections of these like car dealers or people who have used oil and?
So our purview is not to, sorry, our purview is not to inspect the non-regulated waste unless there's a problem. But all of the waste has been, I mean, all of the used oil is being collected by one of the major environmental companies and it's being shipped off island.
Currently, right now?
Right. So, I mean, by law, obviously, they have to handle any type of solid waste that they have, which includes non-hazardous petroleum. So it's being collected through a private company and everything is being shipped off island at this current time.
Okay. And is EPA inspecting these, these companies that generate used oil?
We don't inspect the companies per se. It's part of their business practice. It's a best management practices to collect their used oil at all of these auto stations and then things like that.
But we're finding more and more people dumping used oil in containers and like cooking oil jars or bottles in the jungle. We're seeing more of them distributed that way because it's cheaper for them to throw it in the jungle than it is to call this environmental agency to come up and pick it up like they're supposed to.
I would attribute that to these fly-by-night shops and things like that. Most, not all of the, the licensed companies are managing their waste properly. And so, we don't find any big companies that we'd say like an auto shop, one that's actually licensed doing any of that. That's the night dumpsters and things like that and these chop shop kind of operations that are, we do go out and inspect when we get complaints regarding them. If they're actively doing some type of operation and there's creating any type of obnoxious odors or we see any type of waste, our staff go out and we do the inspections on them. But our purview is not actually to go out and then inspect these, these types of shop unless there's some type of problem.
Why not?
It's not in our mandate to do inspections at like gas stations and, but we do inspect them.
So it looks like we should because we're finding more and more, you know, these oils being dumped in our jungle area than we are before, ever before. I mean, times are tough right now. People are scrambling, you know, for funding and they just don't have it anymore. So they take the easy way out and it's going to, especially when they start dumping on the northern side. These oils can easily, you know, seep into our, you know, land. So I think that's something that USPA, I mean, Guam EPA needs to look at to provide this type of inspection and regulations or regularly inspect these companies regardless if it's fly-by-night, you know. Go ahead.
Yeah. So Senator, we are, again, we're in a process of capacity building, which includes hiring more people. We are short-staffed, but we have the ability right now to increase our, our employment, employee numbers. And again, I mentioned this during roundtables and that, and other public hearings, that we welcome anybody who thinks they qualify, we'll run them through the system and we would gladly hire. We do need more inspectors. We do need more people to come out to be able to encompass doing things that maybe not, as, as Mr. Gutierrez said, maybe not be fully mandated. But we, you know, we do inspections, we do look at records. But just like in another bill that we heard, there's some things that we can't cover 24/7 on this island. We, we do our best and we are building our capacity to be better at it. So again, without additional people coming in, that's where our limitation for our agency. I know that's a very sorry answer and I apologize, but the limits are the limits and that's where we are at at this point.
Yeah. That seems to be the, the go-to excuse for everybody. But I think that, you know, if you look at all the people that are there currently right now and the amount of funding that's being paid on their salary, you would think that they have, you know, they can think outside the box, you know, and find a way to, to assist in areas that are desperately needed to protect our environment, you know. And it's something as simple as that. You know, it doesn't take an act of Congress to have somebody to go out and start looking at these areas that are being dumped on with these used oils or putting up cameras, you know, to finding out who's doing it. I think once before, they caught them through cameras. So I'm just saying that, you know, I, well, I, I'll end that by just asking the chair to continue with the Used Oil Task Force. That was something that we put up in the 35th Guam Legislature to address the used oil in Guam because it's going to get to a point where some of these countries are going to just say, we're no longer accepting your waste, you know, so you're going to have to deal with it yourself. And then that's when we're going to have to come up with something and, you know, we, nobody wants incinerating, you know, nobody wants certain other ways, but technology is the way to go to address it. So I asked that the chairperson of, of the committee to, you know, reinstate the Used Oil Task Force and continue to address this issue.
Yeah. If I could say that, that has, that discussion has occurred. We are going to be, thanks to the effort of Senator Perez, we are trying to pick up and start up the Used Oil Task Force again. Again, when we did it before, the solution was, we're hoping industry takes over. And that's kind of what's happened now. Now, when you talk about, so the mechanism is there to get rid of used oil on Guam. Now we're having to try to figure out again, how do we prevent illegal dumpsters? And that just goes with every other illegal activity that happens on this island. How do you stop illegal activity? Well, we try to do it by enforcement and that's what we're working on, Senator. Thank you.
Well, I'm looking forward to the task force coming up with other innovative ideas on reusing the used oil to other options that we have on this island, you know, for fuel or any kind of way to recycle and reuse. So I appreciate your time again and for you being here for GPA as well as your testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taidikwe. So, um, Ms. Flores, you have something you wanted to add?
Yes, actually, I just wanted to expand on Senator Fisher's question. Uh, when I was referring to plants and animals, I was also referring to coral, which sometimes folks forget is an animal. But coral reef is very sensitive to acid. And we're dealing with a serious issue of ocean acidity right now, climate change and ocean warming that's impacting the health of our coral reef. This ultimately impacts the health of our fishing, of our fish stock. So this is a food source for our people. It's an economic impact as well as an environmental one. So I just wanted to, it also impacts the natural protections we, that the reef gives us from tropical storms and tidal waves. And so all of that's connected. So I just wanted to extend that point a little further. Thank you so much.
It is, Madam Chair. Ms. Flores, uh, just a couple more questions. So, um, in the bill, it states that, um, it will basically prohibit the burning of any kind of, um, fuel, fossil fuel that is above fifteen parts per million after Cabras 1 and 2 are closed. So, uh, does this also affect, uh, road vehicles, like gasoline?
No, this is strictly diesel. And, uh, all vehicles now today are, uh, run on, um, ultra-low sulfur diesel. And if it doesn't run on ultra-low sulfur diesel, then basically those, uh, big vehicles are being, uh, like they said, decommissioned because they can't run on that type of fuel, you know.
Okay, yeah, I I understand the 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 purpose of the bill.
Yeah.
But the, just the wording, it it states, no person shall burn fossil fuel containing in excess of fifteen parts per million. So perhaps we need to clarify that. We have to clarify that a little bit more, okay? See, was there another point? Oh, yeah, so the ultra-low sulfur, I'm sorry.
Well, it's any fuel, so any any fuel that you burn shouldn't be more than point one five, even if it's gasoline, yeah, it's correct.
So in that case, do we need to clarify this?
No, I think it's fine, fossil fuel. Any fuel shouldn't be below that standard, even gasoline.
The gasoline we're bringing in is ultra-low sulfur?
Yes, right.
Gasoline?
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. Any, there's any, can you think of anything other that we're importing that may not follow this requirement?
No, everything would be below that standard, jet fuel, any other fuel.
Jet fuel, okay.
Yeah.
And maritime fuel?
That's completely different because it's shipped, ocean-going vessels are under a different, uh, law, which is administered by, uh, US EPA through international treaty.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just want to follow up with Senator Taidikwe's question. Uh, can we bring down the, um, used oil sulfur content to ultra-low content? Is that a possibility?
Well, there's nobody using that fuel right now. So the way they do it in other countries is they ship it to like Korea. Korea refine it to a standard that they can use in their country. And normally, uh, I think in the US, the refined oil standard for burning, uh, is five hundred parts per million. And with that standard, they use it basically for waste energy. They burn it as as fuel for for, to make energy. And that's the lowest they probably can define it economically is to five hundred parts per million. So I know in Hawaii, that's what they're doing. They're refining their oil in Hawaii down to five hundred parts per million and they're burning it for waste energy.
Okay, all right. So then we'll definitely follow up with this in a roundtable or the the task force. Okay, so yeah, thank you for all of you for your your testimony, your time today. Um, so, you know, I think this bill marks an important milestone in Guam's, uh, environmental, um, history. Um, you know, for many years or for many decades, the the citizens near the PD power plants have been exposed to unhealthy air. And, um, I think it's important that, you know, we're coming together today to ensure that we're cleaning up our act. And, um, and I think it's also, you know, I want to also commend GPA for bringing down the, um, the pollutant air levels. So and as far as what I hear today is that you are in compliance with this bill already before it's been enacted. So, yeah, thank you for your cooperation. And we'll work hard, uh, to get these amendments put in and get this on to the session agenda, uh, in the coming session. So it is, Madam Chair. We'll take a brief recess, uh, for, to set up for the next panel. Thank you.